All right, I'd like to welcome everyone to our first Village Board meeting of 2023. Before I begin, tonight's moment of silence will be in honor of those we've drawn so far in 2023. Betty Evans, former Woodbury Public Library Clerk, Molly Sabini, Chrissy Johnson, and Lori Delisi. Will everyone with these rise in the pledge of allegiance and all the signs? I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, the one nation, united in the physical, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Anyway, at this time, I would like to ask Village Clerk Katnig if she would administer the oath of office to the newly first-time elected Village Trustees, Vic Forelli and Sue Cerriello. What do you guys want to do, together or one at a time?
One at a time.
The public has spoken.
Raise your right hand after me. I state my name, I Susan Silverman.
It's her honor.
To solemnly swear
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of
Faithfully discharge the duties of
village trustee.
Village trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
I think we have some of you in the waiting room. I don't know if you can put it out in the waiting room, Beth?
I have two names in the waiting room, they don't have last name.
Let me see.
So I sent them two text messages to put their best names in. Glad you popped up.
I'm gonna probably pop up on there also, so see now. Okay, before we get started, let me begin by doing what I always do in introducing your board of Village Trustees, starting far in, trustee Chrissy Graziano. Next to him is trustee Vic Forelli. Next to him is trustee Sue Cerriello. Next to her is my deputy mayor, Tara Burek. To my right is Village Clerk, Desiree Katnig, and of course, it is I, the mayor, Mayor Jack Moss. So welcome once again. So anyway, it's my favorite time of year as we do our new year reorganization. So we begin by first saying it is my pleasure once again to reappoint Tara Burek as deputy mayor for the Village of Woodbury. Thank you. The following appointments, board liaisons and appointed positions. Liaison to the town board is me, Mayor Jack Moss. Liaison to the planning board is trustee Cerriello and trustee Graziano. Liaison to the zoning board is trustee Burek and trustee Forelli. Liaison to the fire department is trustee Burek and trustee Forelli. Liaison to water and sewer department, trustee Graziano and me, the mayor. Liaison to the building department, trustee Forelli and trustee Graziano. Liaison to the highway department is trustee Burek and trustee Cerriello. Liaison to the revitalization committee is trustee Cerriello and trustee Forelli. Liaison to climate smart task force is trustee Cerriello and trustee Burek. Liaison to the land preservation, review plan or local board plan, trustee Burek and trustee Graziano. Liaison to the Monroe Woodbury Central School District is trustee Cerriello. And really, this is a position we're creating. My game plan for the new year is to, one, look at potentially establishing a junior government for the Village of Woodbury. Also looking at it as a possible tool for our fire and ambulance recruitment. And actually, what's been talked about in some of our climate smart meetings is a conduit for them into the school district. So liaison to the Cornwall School District will be myself, Mayor Jack Moss. Anyway, can I please have a motion in second to approve the ladies' liaisons and appointed positions as the... Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving along. Can I please have motion in second to appoint the following individuals to the following positions? Appeals officer for foils, myself. Village Clerk, Treasurer, Reverend Shaw, Desiree Katnig. Purman Officer, myself. Can I have motion in second, please?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Can I please have motion in second to designate Kevin Norton, the law firm Norton and Torrey, as the official boy band of the Village of Woodbury?
Second.
Second?
Yes.
All in favor? All right. Can I please have motion in second to adopt the following meeting procedures as presented?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, procurement policy, can I please have a motion in second to adopt the procurement policy as presented?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving right along. Public comments on agenda items only. The agenda is available on the table to my right. Anyone have anything they wish to speak on, on the agenda? It's currently on there.
Maria Hunder, question for... On your administrative business, letter F. It doesn't state that's a full-time or part-time position on the agenda. And I'm just curious as to what it was. Because I looked up into the general code and there is no title listed under fire inspector. All there is is fire marshal, which is a whole different degree of what they do. And there is an inspector that's listed. So I was just curious, this is a full-time, part-time? And is it taking the place of the two building inspectors we've lost within the last two months, six months or so?
It is a full-time fire inspector position. It is replacing one of the positions that is open right now. The other one we have currently billed as a part-time position. So this will be the creation of a full-time position as fire inspector.
All right. I guess being in the general code, it doesn't state specifically what a fire inspector does. And any inspectors that are appointed by the Village Board are supposed to be trained in service within the New York State Code and they follow the direction of the building code enforcement officer. So I was just curious as to how that is coming about. And then on... On your abstract tonight, I noticed two lines that says Red COM, which I'm presuming is Revitalization Committee. And it's a total of almost $690. I was just curious as to what was purchased with the revitalization committee recently.
That was the decorations for the Central Valley Library. Should be broken up into two separate checks that were...
Right, it's just separate, I didn't mention the names because I didn't want to embarrass anyone of the names. But I'm just curious, being it is a public building, which I am totally aware of what public building means, as this is a public building. But that property is not owned by the Town of Woodbury, which has been definitely defined. And it's private property, privately owned. So if I were to ask you to come to my purchase decorations for my house or anyone else's property that lives in Woodbury, would this Village Board approve that going forward? And to be quite clear, yes, I am the chairperson, reappointed to the revitalization committee for the next seven years. It's been stated publicly, the town board, which I will take care of next week. The Town of Woodbury cannot own private property that's privately owned. And it's not because I did not want to decorate the Central Valley Library, it's because I can't go on someone's private property to decorate. So I just want to be clear that I applaud the board for doing this, but I can come to you next year and say, hey, my neighbor is in dire need of something and you're going to pay for it. That's just my concern and my complaint about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead. Introduce yourself in the routine.
George Blitsko from Jaco Woods and Gubits, on behalf of the Senior Housing Project, a little bit. I wanted to give a little background on the way down. I was trying to think how many trustees we've gone through in this process. This is our third mayor. I'm not sure that there were members of the board that are familiar with this. So I wanted to explain a little bit about the project and the reason why we're looking to have sewer service provided to it, as well as the conditions that we think are appropriate for it. So number one, the project is pursuant to your code, you have the provision of senior ownership. And this is an age-restricted development. You have two flavors of that, you have rental and you have ownership. We have WP3, it's a section which is senior ownership with this code. This is a rental project, it is then designed for 84 units, two-bedroom, smaller units, less traffic. And it is age-restricted people who are still active, it's not what typically you think of as your housing project. So that's the general nature of it. It's been before the board in three occasions, in 2017, we had petition, negative declaration for an 84-unit project. There was an issue that was identified by the Village Board with regard to sewer services at the Holland pump station. So we took some time to try and figure out how we could fix that perhaps. Timber Ridge was reconstructing some of the sewer lines. Tried to work out a whole, a third of the board, the second mayor. The second mayor was not in favor of that and we came back to the original 84 units, two-bedroom. So it's not the problem. When we went back to be a seeker again in October of 2021, the Village Engineer did some research, found out sewer, we don't have a sewer district, you know, sewer area. It's all the same sewer area, it's on the other side, it's not on our side. So it's necessary for us to consider what is called an outlet sewer area user. We work with returning to, not with a closed form for that. My understanding is there are a few, if any, of these currently in the collection. So this may be precedent for it. With regard to this particular project, there are three steps we have to go through. Through secret planning board, we have to go through the Village rezon, the theater. And then goes back for planning board site plan, mostly presuming the zoning is adopted. At each point in that process, there are controls. I know you're still working to work out a line of action for the pump station. And we presume that's when it'll be done, we'll be able to show it work, because there is an interested party who will be working with you on that, make sure that happens publicly. But this is a project which, again, to your code, it's identified to me in our second and third go-around with this. We've done the housing studies and there is a need for it. And what it is doing is allowing, people are essentially in an empty nest situation. Who qualify at 55 plus to move into a rental apartment for a period of time and make decisions about what to do with their house and stuff. So we think it has merit, we think it means village need. There are a series of controls for the process, we make sure it will work. And be hopeful that you'll take this step and allow you to proceed forward. Even though you would be authorizing this, it will not happen until site plan approval and all the necessary changes have been accomplished to put that into place. And also that, we can use this, this is really important for us to follow the planning board. Once the secret comes to you and it made certain conditions to make sure this will work for the benefit of the Village as well as...
Thank you, George. All right, anyone else?
Just to correct Mrs. Hunter. She's already been corrected by the town board that even though...
Please don't use my name, don't mention any personal...
Maria, Maria, she allowed you to speak, let her speak.
Don't look at that floor.
Maria, Maria.
Madam?
Maria, if you wish to speak after her, you're more than welcome to. But in the meantime, let her finish her statement. Go ahead.
Thank you. Moving on to the library, the Central Valley branch is privately owned. But Tyler Etzel, Councilman Etzel, has already told her publicly that it is a publicly used building. So the revitalization committee doesn't have to walk on the property, that's fine. But it's a publicly owned building gifted to Central Valley. So it would be silly to say, would you buy decorations for my home unless it's a public home? Number two, I just want to clarify, the decorations that were purchased, whatever it is, $700. That's a one-time fee, the library keeps the decoration?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so I think the 2021 census was like 12,000 people, 12,200? Six cents a person per cabinet. I will pay you back.
Don't increase.
I'll pay her back six cents if she has a one-time.
You don't need to.
That's okay, no, that's okay. But just my point, a one-time fee for the taxpayers, six cents. And the petty complaints continue, my two cents.
Thank you, Karen. Anyone else who is here with us presently, wish to speak on anything on the agenda? All right, anyone in the public who is joined us via Zoom? You want to try to raise your hand on there, I'll let you speak first. No worries, only once, don't twice. All right, very good, we can move right along. Can I please have motion in second to accept, receive in minutes, the after the meeting held on December 20th, 2022?
Can I make a motion?
Do I have a second?
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Village Clerk Katnig, is your opportunity to speak, please, we got track 13, lucky 13.
Names vouchers 221367 to 221471, in total of $1,344,215,950.
Thank you so much. Can I please have motion in second to approve abstract 13 as read?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Acceptance of resignation, can I please have motion in second to accept with regrets the resignation of John Hand in the position of full-time assisting building inspector III, effective December 30th, 2022?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, on behalf of the board, we wish John Hand much success in all his future endeavors. Cornwall is very lucky to have him. Moving right along, can I please have a motion in a second to accept with regrets resignation, with sincere regrets, I should say, resignation of Andy Zumas from the zoning board of appeals effective the meeting day.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Just brought up some questions, I need to get answered them. Appointment of diversity and inclusion consultant, Bernie Baker. So in 2018, Village Board Woodbury became the first municipality in Orange County to pass the Think Differently Initiative. Since then, Orange County Executive Steve Newhouse has created a Think Differently Task Force. Woodbury is the only municipality that is part of that task force. I currently serve as our representative. My goal with this appointment is to pass the torch to someone who is equally and certainly more qualified than myself, since she deals with this on an everyday waking basis. Helping Woodbury, ultimately helping Woodbury become more of a welcoming and inclusive community to those on autism spectrum and with disabilities, including their families. Hopefully, working with our various committees, they'll create programs to achieve this goal. It gives me great pleasure to ask for a motion in a second to appoint Bernie Baker as the diversity and inclusion volunteer consultant to the Village of Woodbury.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Appointment of five inspectors, Tim Finnegan. Can I please have a motion in a second to appoint Tim Finnegan to the position of full-time fire inspector at hourly rate of $31.47, and start date of January 30th, 2023?
Motion.
I'll second it. Discussion? All in favor?
I have one, another question.
Okay.
I don't know who would know the answer to this, but how much time does he have to get his certifications?
Well, he meets the minimum requirements of the position, so therefore he is in place. It's going to be a provisional appointment, because there's currently no civil service list that is in effect. Once the county offers the test, he not only has to take the test, he has to be reachable. If he is not, that means he vacates the position.
There's no additional certifications other than the exam?
Well, he'll need his annual things, like my ability to do all things, and maybe enroll in the oral or annual thing. So he currently meets the minimum qualifications the county did through the...
Yeah.
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
All righty. So can I, I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
No. Okay, four, one. All right, so we have a vacancy on the zoning board of appeals. So can I please have a motion in second to authorize the Village Clerk to advertise for vacancy, advertise for a vacancy on the zoning board of appeals. Letters of interest will be accepted until 4:00 PM on February 3rd, 2023. This will be the term vacated by Andy Zumas. So can I please have a motion in a second?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now comes the difficult part. Scheduling a special meeting to interview potential candidates for the zoning board of appeals. So if we're saying that for three, a peak rate is the drop dead date, I need to give my clerk's time to reach the potential ZVA members and then schedule. I don't know what's going to be in time for the next ZVA meeting.
Well, what I can say, no.
Yeah, is it this day? Yeah.
We can have an evaluation?
Yeah.
Can we do it on the next four-year, last meeting?
Yeah, we can, I would like to do this via Zoom.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and we can still do that. So how does the ninth Friday morning meeting sound, please, you know?
It's good for me.
February 9th? Okay.
February 9th?
It's February 9th.
February 9th, yeah.
What time?
I would say six, it all depends on how many candidates we get.
Okay.
And usually we try to put 15 minutes last.
I mean, if you want, since we're waiting till after the next meeting to have them do it anyway, see how many we get between now and your January 26th meeting. And if we only have one or two at it, that can help you give a better time frame.
Okay. Does that work for everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, we technically schedule for, we don't have yet. We'll technically schedule for February 9th and we will readdress it on the 26th. Okay, old business, moving along. Change order number two for Ambro Park Water System. So change order for this involves a local tree, which I kind of wish I had known about, because we have a tree guy on payroll. But we could have used on this whole thing. So at the request of the water superintendent, two large, unempty trees named lagoons were removed already, were then damaged the newly installed fence. So what I need is a motion in second to approve change order two, totaling $3,600 for the project Ambro Park Water System filter replacement and treatment plan upgrades. Wow, that's a mouthful. Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now it comes to, we come to the point of meeting which George discussed, though I don't know if we're really going to be able to move forward very well this time.
So tonight, I had some conversations with George Blitsko, and I do think that there are areas in a draft that I prepared that need clarification or further definitions. It's possible that like we have meetings, maybe in the family, with yourself and Desiree, to try and get further detail on specific construction requirements, as well as curmudgeonly things like that that are hard to bring over from the ground.
Okay, so for right now, I can just leave this alone?
We can leave it alone, I just want to separate it from what I'm working on.
Okay. So we will move right along from that, unless the board has any questions for attorney?
We're only talking about sewer, right?
Yeah. You good, CK? Yes, you're good?
I'm good.
Okay. Okay, moving right along. Short-term rental law. So can I please have motion in second to introduce Local Law 1 of 2023, what's that?
I got a message here, I guess it's going back to our Tim Finnegan. Will he hold a license or will the county?
Hold what license?
I'm going to ask her if she can come online.
I'm not sure.
Sure, license she's talking about.
The BF violence back.
The county doesn't hold licenses, the county is just the entity that we have to go through to hire people because of civil service law for the state of New York. So I'm not sure what her, I'm not sure.
Wait, okay. Yep.
We're good.
All right, so we're now introducing tonight, short-term rentals law, Local Law 1 of 2023. So I don't know how much we really want to do with this tonight. Does any of the board members have any questions on it right now? Any questions for council, any changes, anything? So at this time, can I please have motion in second to introduce Local Law 1 of 2023 to create a chapter 255 entitled Short-Term Rentals of the Village Board?
Can I make a motion?
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, can I have a motion in a second? For the Village of Woodbury, we assume we need agency.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, can I have a motion in a second to type this as a type one action on the secret?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And can I please have motion in second to declare this an endgame?
Motion.
Second. I mean, all in favor?
Aye.
And finally, can I please have motion in a second to refer introductory Local Law 1 of 2023 to the Woodbury Planning Board, the Woodbury Building Department, and to the Orange County Planning Department? Oh, and to the fire department?
Motion. Second.
Second.
All in favor? All right. All right, then can I please have motion in second to schedule a public hearing held on January 23rd, February 23rd, 2023, and to see any public comment on introductory Local Law 1 of 2023?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. This one, we're going to switch up a bit, because it's not, we're not going to be introducing Local Law for this, it is going to be a resolution, which we will then discuss on the 26th, adding further exemptions to that. So can I please have a motion in second to continue the moratorium as presented?
Are you thinking of a formal resolution like last time?
I'll have a formal resolution for any additional exemptions, but to the extent it needs extended, it is the extended motion.
So six months, right?
Six months.
Time duration happens.
Okay. So can I please have a motion in a second to extend the current moratorium for six continuous months? Uh, with, well, that's pretty much it. Yeah. Motion?
It's motion.
Second.
Alright.
Question?
Yeah.
When will we discuss the exemption? At this point, yes.
Yeah, have a look at that resolution.
Okay.
It's going to consist similar to what I'm trying to include in the revised local law.
Okay.
Then when we sell the time period, I can take the changes to better form.
Okay.
Thank you. Alright.
With a vote.
No, we got a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alrighty. Alright, legal license notification for Fall Per Country Club. Notice was received on December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. That Fall Per Country Club LLC located at the right twenty twenty-two. Located in two S six Smithville Road in Central Valley is applying for a legal license from the New York State Division of Alcohol Beverage Control, State Liquor Authority. Letter was sent to the police department to determine if there was any reason why the village should object to this application to be approved. And they stated there have been no issues or concerns that prohibit this application. Therefore, I will instruct the village clerk to please send the State Liquor Authority approval.
No, Mr. Letter's A D O mail.
Well, objection to this.
Does the liquor license have the type of establishment, does it have to match what they're legally entitled to do on the property? For instance, it says swimming and boating and skiing, so and tennis.
That's something the State A D C, Alcohol Beverage Control, the liquor authority would have review, I would say. Um, you're, you're only involved, they're required to give you a thirty-day notification of their intent to apply. You have a license and this fulfills that requirement. In that thirty days, if you want to object and you have valid reasons to, so letting you know to play cert minor, and you have a lease report back and that kind of thing up. Um, I can put in the letter, by the way, this establishment is a catering facility and there is no ice skating or tennis or
Swimming or skiing.
Or boating. Um, but I don't know, are those considered, are those uses allowed there at some point?
I must have boated in the pond.
I'm like, yeah.
On the E two pole.
Kelly?
They currently don't have approval for those.
For those, yeah. So I can, I can put currently this, this site only has approval for catering and golf, not tennis or fishing, uh, whatever. I can do that if you want.
It doesn't even say venue for events.
It does.
No, it just says live music weddings, but it doesn't say type of establishment.
That's strange.
Yeah, I mean, that's the state's forte.
Yeah.
Well, I think she should have filled out, you know, type of establishment.
Yeah.
Wedding and events.
Anything for a moment? Anything else? No. Get a good laugh out of them. Alright, authorized purchase of a new fire truck. So, uh, given the backstory initially, you're back in early part of twenty twenty-two, I did approach Chief Burke about tasking the team to begin the process of purchasing a new fire apparatus. Uh, this process, I believe, began under Mayor Vegan. Uh, we finally received the big specifications. The details, the bridge details were as followed, and I asked Chief Burke to join us here. We are purchasing a board-approval one hundred-foot seven-foot ladder truck, Pierce Arrow X T one-on-seven Aerial. The vehicle should fit the needs of Woodbury for years to come. This vehicle comes with no pump and a cost savings measure, a maintenance money pit, and have pumps on other trucks.
Gender rep?
Yeah. This truck will eventually replace, yep, I quoted you correctly. This truck will eventually replace Truck Five-O-three, um, which of course we will resell, auction, et cetera. Uh, if the board approves, we have two options here. The total will be one point six million dollars. Alright, and ten thirty-eight months to build. We have two potential terms. A fifty percent prepay, which is almost eight hundred thousand dollars at contract, and then an eight hundred thousand on delivery. We would receive a discount of thirty-eight thousand dollars. Or we could pay seventy-five percent prepay, which would work out to be one point two million dollars at contract repayment on delivery of three hundred ninety-nine thousand to be exact, which would save taxpayers of Woodbury an additional fifty-three thousand dollars. So, does that make eighty altogether?
No.
No.
No, it's an additional.
That would be nice though.
It's an additional fifteen, right?
Additional fifteen, you're making more than adding your interest.
I was gonna say, what are we looking on the bottom?
I would do fifty-fifty as a, as a budget.
There you go. So just so the public knows, the truck found was established many moons ago. Uh, currently has one point one million dollars on it. Um, alright, like I said, right now I am going to ask the board, and that's why I didn't mention. So, can I please have a motion in a second to
Just, first. I'm going to ask, can I, I have a couple things I just have to say.
Okay, go ahead.
For the records, so, alright, so the public, may I order why we need new ladders, right? Uh, the existing ladder, the seventy-five foot wing, we did a seventy-five foot ladder and a pump on fifteen hundred gallons of fuel. Uh, the existing ladder, uh, only reached a maximum of four stories right now. That, we tested, uh, damage to high school in the back in the southern end, max. So it was four, four stories is it. As we know, we have, I think, some six-story buildings coming in, in the future potentially, so right away, we're almost at this event with the Albert Service Community. So that's, that's one big one. In addition, even with that truck today, seventy-five foot ladder, there are places in Woodbury that we actually can't reach. Timber Ridge has quite a few setbacks, interior, uh, places like the greens are more than seventy-five feet. So there's that need out there. The proposed ladder is a hundred and seven feet, as the mayor said, which will effectively serve seven stories, but likely more than that. So I would put that out there. Um, maintenance costs, especially in the past five years on existing ladder, the pump have skyrocketed. Uh, right now, this pump is not certified to be engaged and disrepair. Um, and there are issues with the ladder itself in terms of welding, uh, and, and just the general age. Uh, the electric system, liberal all, has an issue that's not easily fixed, and that's directly from the manufacturer. So, so there are issues with the ladder as it stands today. Um, in addition, since the apparatus was manufactured two thousand and one, uh, there have been numerous safety innovations that are, that are not deployed on that piece of, uh, for the roll of stability, seatbelts in your bags, crash center systems, collision avoidance, better driver vision, et cetera. So that's another reason to save. Um, one thing to note that the, this is purchased under the H G A C purchase handbrake, which we, the village, use uh, for our five-to-one, our engine five-to-one, which we purchased a few years ago. Uh, so we'll do the same thing. As the mayor mentioned, this truck we would establish well over a year ago to determine the needs of, of the department and the community, um, as well as come up with these specifications, which it, it took a lot of time. So I just want the public to understand why we need a new ladder, uh, what steps we're taking to come up with this specification. Uh, there is no pump on this, uh, new truck. Uh, we don't feel there's a need for one. It saves taxpayers money. We have pumps on every other piece of apparatus, so there was a method to the madness behind that. We did. One more thing. Um, I don't want to say that this values, but just as a point of reference, uh, and the neighboring, very close communities. Uh, one ladder was ordered in March twenty twenty-one. It was a C grade, different manufacturer, uh, one point four million. Uh, and that was a hundred-foot ladder, the debt of a pump though, but it was also two years ago. Uh, and October twenty-two, which was a Pierce, um, a hundred-foot tower ladder, one point eight million. So just as a point of reference, so people don't, you know, can understand we are, we are pricing, just want to put that out there. Put for the record for the board's, you know, consideration.
And the Pierce, the Pierce, you've gotten Pierce before, you've used Pierce before.
Correct. Which, which is, that's one of the things that the company like to do is, is, or, or sort of standardize for maintenance purposes. So if we have, the entire fleet is the same, it just makes it easier to maintain. And, and our engine five-two-one was Pierce.
And the reason why we, you kind of got the bid package and drew this on the agenda rather quickly, quickly, is because we needed to approve it as quickly as possible because once we can lock in a price, then it's not going up anywhere. It's not, and we are, the way the market is right now, it just fluctuates constantly.
Correct.
So, um, I was going to, after giving a, a, a motion in a second, go and ask the board if they have any questions for Chief Burke. So at this time, I'll just ask, is any board member starting with you? Chris, you have any questions for?
They got two questions.
The chief board, chief officer? I couldn't see you. I got the hour in the way.
They got two questions. One, it's, it's from the day of order. It takes three years to build?
Yeah, so one point is very much what we reported. I talked to our representative, he said, depending on when it's approved, he's going to work on it to see if he can get into the twentys. But it, it's just with everything going on right now, it's thirty-eight months. Honestly, I, I would be unable to fire services seeing that ever, and I like it.
Now, what is the normal, what is the normal, if we're running this?
I think five-to-one was like sixteen, eighteen.
Eighteen.
Something like that, yeah.
That was what we were initially talking about.
Yeah, it's going to take eight months.
There's a reason, the reason for that question is, how much fund balance do we have available now?
One point one million.
One point one million.
You'll have enough.
Um, Desiree, what?
Yeah.
Well, and, 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 Andrew, what was the cost for the seventy-five percent option?
Seventy-five.
And we would have saved fifty-three thousand.
No, we saved fifty-three thousand. How much do we have to put down?
One point two million.
So it's close to what we have in the fund balance.
Yes, it is.
What I'm getting at is to save the taxpayers some money, would that be a better?
Well, would, would they?
It won't save.
Desiree, what I was, that it would probably be beneficial to keep that money in the account and interest.
Yeah, what's the interest rate across?
Well, I'm so funny you should ask.
She has it open.
Your village treasurer negotiated with her bank.
Boom.
And she's getting three point twelve percent interest.
No, but I'm looking at it for a different reason.
So I want to have to sell five quality shirts.
If the truck, what?
If the truck is in that bad a shape, that the maintenance costs are skyrocketing, should, would we make the money back? Like banking that fifty-three thousand to pay for the repairs over the next thirty months?
Okay, which is the interest.
Right, but I'm saying, would the, would the repair cost outweigh the interest?
You're not saving the fifty-three, you're saving the difference between the thirty and the fifty-three, which is fifteen thousand. Because if we do half and half, we get a thirty-eight thousand discount.
No, no, I get that. What I'm saying is, I don't know how much this truck is going to cost over the next three years to keep fixing. So we might be better off.
What's your annual spend on repairs? Any idea?
It's between five and ten.
Thousand?
Yeah, but it, it also depends on what it is, if it's, if it's a major weld on the lattice, that's going to be much, much greater. If it's, uh, higher, it's not. So it varies, but I would say average, somewhere in that range.
I'm just trying to figure out if, if, like paying, prepaying more or more.
You know, so because you're foregoing the interest, which outweighs the fifty-three, so that, no.
Over time, because it's
You could use the fifty-three.
Even at three percent, even at three percent, right, you're looking at, the difference is three ninety-nine and five, right? So at three percent, you're looking at roughly twelve thousand in interest. Right, so over three years is thirty-six, so you're kind of, you're doing it back.
Alright, just want to make sure we have enough money to pay for the repairs while we're waiting three years for a vehicle.
We're taking it.
New budget.
Uh, any other questions, trustee Graziano?
That's it.
Trustee Perelli, I know you brought up a good point to me about the hundred and seven foot and the need for that.
Yes, well, um, and then he answered that question, that you can get up to the chenilles in resident, in places like Brigadoon. Now that there's a chenille's mine, that's one of my concerns, is right now you can't get there.
And, and that's, that's one of the points, you know, Brigadoon, uh, Timber Ridge, Greens, Blimey, Rainy, a lot of those are so far set back and, and high. So this will, will be recovered.
Alright, great. That was my only real question. But I, I do have one worst-case doomsday scenario. We're waiting three years for this truck potentially to be built. That's right, I don't know. Do we have any protection or if the company goes out of business during the three years?
They're not going to go out of business. Not this company. This is the number one in the country.
Okay.
They go out of business, we're screwed. Country.
Figure a problem.
It's a no question. I do have an online question. Will this new truck fit in existing firehouse?
Yes, it will. We have the last page.
Okay.
We won't be utilizing Central Alley for that, correct?
No.
Okay. Alright, uh, trustee Perelli, any other questions?
No, I'm good.
Okay, trustee Suriello?
Aye.
Trustee Barrett?
How old is the existing ladder?
Uh, two thousand one, so two twenty-two.
And the useful life is usually?
Twenty, twenty-five, twenty-five, it's got to be twenty.
You'll be at that once this finally comes in.
Um, how much do you think you can get for an auction? Any idea?
It's tough to say. I mean, between fifty and seventy, depends, depends on the amount, yeah.
And the level of the truck that you're proposing we purchase is what, mid, low, high?
In terms of, uh,
Like gadgets?
So in terms of like, it, it, like features, I would say it, it's, it's low to mid. There's nothing special. It has just the regular safety features on it. Like I said, no pump, uh, which is better for maintenance, but there's no even the lighting is basically minimal. It's effective, but it's, it's the minimal, we're looking.
Doesn't have all the crazy.
Do any neighboring municipalities not have a pump on their truck?
Other departments?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
It's common?
Chester, yeah.
Okay. You're not putting this book, nevermind.
We can get a discussion after though.
No, yeah, yeah. Okay, so it, it may reach the top of a Brigadoon house, but what about these giant things that are coming our way? Yeah, like the shops, that's going to be really high, the shops of Woodbury.
Yeah, I mean, a hundred and seven, I said seven, it could effectively get to a ten-story.
Okay.
Depending on your setback.
Who's on the ends of the? You, the other guy? No, he's the chief, he's calling the shots.
No, but, but that's, that's common. So what is, able to a hundred and a hundred and ten is the standard ladder now. Uh, or a four-story.
Okay.
It, it's, you really can't get any higher than a one-ten.
And how much bigger is it? Not, not like width, is it bigger than what we currently have?
It's longer.
It's not wider?
It's not.
So you're turning?
It's not wider and it's not, it's the same exact height as our ladder, which is a certain degree. So we, we have to be what our ladder was now, or lower, it's within age. So it's longer, it's shorter, and it's the same width.
Okay, so you're not going to be a big problem turning into any?
No, I mean, so it's a, it's a dual rear axle, which is what our tanker currently is.
Okay.
So it's no longer than that.
Okay, and you have no problems with that?
No, no restrictions.
I feel like Judge Judy. Thank you.
And just for the record, normally these developers, I know that the shops of Woodbury did contribute to the purchase of a new, uh, a new truck. Uh, I know that it's something we should probably discuss with the C O R guys on the side road.
Yeah.
Um, I think there's a senior housing development that could be coming in and, yeah, there you go.
I, I think anything that's over a term, like four-story proposed, because I think that was a restriction, should have some, you know, feel of handling it. I, I do because right now, you, you, you're not, you're not above a four-story building partially due to, like, you know, four setbacks. So four setbacks.
Four setbacks.
Correct.
Chief, I have another online question for you.
Sure.
Is the safety, is that safely, effectively reaching ten stories without putting anyone in danger?
It far could inherently endanger any occupation, so I'm not sure that. We have ways to tie off and, um, yeah. The answer is no. It doesn't change if you put a rock, a rock operation. Sort of safe.
You like James Bond, dangerous, my good old name.
It's inherently.
Alright, any further questions from board members?
Yeah, the current ladder can fit under the bridge exit. I believe it could.
The only way it cannot fit under is kind of curved.
Okay. Yeah, well, like Jeep barely fits under a front house, so I get that. And what is the ladder made of, Eric?
Exactly.
The ladder, what is it made of? What material? Wood, seriously? Alright, come on. Is it a little bit of steel or steel? Thank you.
It's right out of wood.
I get it, you know?
It's made out of kindling.
Thank you.
Alright, let's.
You know, yeah, right, ever, ever, okay. Sorry.
No, it's all good.
All good.
Alright, any further questions from the board? Alright, moving along, uh, can I please have a motion in a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign the new contract with Pierce and with the fifty percent option?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I trust the account.
Are you really gonna go up and argue against like? Come on now, take him down.
Thirty, three seconds.
All right. All right, that ends the regular business of the Village of Woodbury. Almost an hour in, it is now time for everyone's favorite portion of the meeting, public comment on anything at all. And I will start with those in who are joining us virtually. So if you wish to speak, please unmute yourself and speak your piece.
We have one, Marjorie has her panel.
Yeah, go ahead, Marjorie.
I'm yours.
Yeah, unmute yourself.
Hi, um, I'm not, this is my first time doing this, so do I have to do anything?
There's no mistakes, you're okay.
All right, so I've got two things I wanna bring up to the board. These are two extremely, extremely important things. Um, I'm gonna go with the first one for a reason. I was approached by another fellow neighbor, um, in our village about water supply, okay? They had an issue, they are on well water, their neighbors are on regular water for, you know how it gets supplied to most of us. They had a huge issue with their well. They were trying to find out if it was possible to switch to regular water, since everybody else on their road has the regular water. But the process that she was dragged through just completely blew my mind, completely blew my mind. It was quite embarrassing to hear another fellow, um, neighbor to have to go through much, through so much struggling that she had to do. She had called multiple people to ask, her water pressure was almost non-existent. To me, if you have no water in your house, that is an emergency situation, water is something you really do need for many reasons. But was called and asked about things, even to the point where she was gonna try to get her well fixed, but it would also result in her having to bring a backhoe in and have them, you know, use a backhoe, take her pump out. She was told, oh, you have to submit letters, you have to submit zonings for permits and stuff, which is understandable. But she's also being told she has to wait an absurd amount of time, thirty-plus days, which I find in cases like this, these are emergency cases, is there not something that we could do better to help our fellow neighbors in these situations, especially something in the case of she wanted to possibly change her water over to the regular water and she wanted to know the process, but was told she had to come to a board meeting?
No, she does not have to come to a board meeting, she just submits a letter requesting that she ties into our system. Now, I'll defer to CJ with the rest of it since water is his forte.
There's several, there's several issues, it's not a fast process, I'm gonna tell you that right now, because A, when you're on your own well water, your water service into your house is from wherever your well is, so if the well's in the backyard, water's coming in the back of your house. If the water needs in the front yard, in the front of the house, you're gonna have to run a brand-new service line, have a plumber come in, reset all the plumbing, and, and set up a meter outlet in, in order to get that water from the front of the house. So that's why you need a backhoe, you need to dig. Second of all, when you have private well water, in New York State, you cannot have a well hooked up and municipal water simultaneously, because it's a health violation. So the, so the well has to be taken out of service, or else you have a backflow issue that could really be dangerous to the rest of the people who are on the water system. So it's not as simple as it sounds. It, it's a lot more complicated than it sounds to get water serviced in there, especially if you have a private well.
Marjorie, is this Ferndale?
Um, I don't have her address exactly, but she is in our area, but, which I understand, um, the whole process is a little bit more than what we're saying, I understand, but maybe the process of explaining to people a little better, um, you know, not everybody comes from our backgrounds, not everybody knows the things of backing up sewers, backing up stuff, you know, and, you know, health concerns and stuff like that, but maybe the process could be a little bit more friendlier, especially for those that, you know, they pay the village taxes, they pay town taxes, and honestly, it kind of broke my heart to hear somebody just come to me, I'm not, I don't have anything, but they just, to vent, and they just felt so helpless, extremely helpless, and it just broke my heart.
I agree with that, which I understand and, and I get, but again, we have, there is a very high protocol and process that has to be followed. If somebody wants to, needs an explanation, we're more than willing to give it to them, but you have to follow the proper protocol. And you have to get a, there's all kinds of hoops to jump through, it's not, water is the most regulated utility in existence, and it's the only one that goes into your body, so it's that way for purpose. You know, it's not like gas or electric, you can throw a lining around and it doesn't harm anybody. This, you're putting this product into your body and you're connecting it to other people who are doing the same. So you have to take the utmost safety and caution when you do these things and do them in the proper protocol in order to get this stuff together, and it's not an easy process, it's gonna be very expensive. It's not cheap either, it's gonna be very expensive to hook in for the water supply, you gotta run a service line. There's no ifs and buts, you gotta run a service line out to the road, make a path, and, and get it all ready and prepared for water service from the village, so it's not, it's not inexpensive nor quick.
And Marjorie, the cost can't be put onto the taxpayers of Woodbury. It really has, it has to be bare by the homeowner themselves to switch over to us. We don't get these requests very often, I think we got one request like this in my time on the board, and that may have been two years ago, they got approval for it and they never moved forward with it, so.
Well, maybe like if something like this comes about, maybe we could do something as a community that if somebody's saying that they have a water issue and they have, they're like, have no water, maybe something like, you guys could do something where you say, okay, this is an emergency case, how can we help you with water? Is there a way that we could bring you some water, um, you know, to help for the time being while you, you know, go through the process and stuff like that, like maybe a little bit of help is what I'm, you know, saying.
Mister Mayor, can I say something?
Sir.
Last, last summer with the, uh, the drought situation we had going on, we had numerous, numerous phone calls about people's wells going dry and trying to hook into the water district. And a lot of them, we explained to them that there is no main in front of your house. So it's not like we're not giving them the right answers or the wrong answers, it's short and sweet. If the main's not in front of your house, there's nothing we could do about it. So maybe that person that she's talking about, maybe that's from that area.
Mickey, I think this is the, what we talked about yesterday, the letter that just came in that we?
She said, she said it wasn't there.
No, she didn't have.
If you just got that letter, then yes, it was there, if you just got that letter.
It's Ferndale, Mickey.
Yes, I, we did explain to her what the procedures were to, uh, tie into the water system, just like CJ just did, so.
Okay, Marjorie, we did receive that letter, so we haven't, it wasn't addressed just yet. So I did speak to Mickey yesterday about it, uh, I still need some more time to review it, so hopefully we'll have some answers by the next meeting. In the meantime, this is question number two.
Uh, question number, well, statement number two. So we all know, over half of us are on the Woodbury pages, there's multiple Woodbury pages, and we all know this is a big issue, and I know this is kind of like beating a dead horse or whatever you want to call it, but the speeding has become so much out of control in our village and our streets, not even just that, it's right in front of our own schools. And I'm gonna tell you this, like, there's ways that we could work together that should be accomplished, that should be helping our residential areas. You've got, we've got more kids now than we ever have had, and it's a scary situation to be worried about, you know, God forbid our child being hit and killed by somebody that could have been stopped. We have a total of one speeding sign, okay, one speed sign that says, hey, this is the speed that, you know, a car was going around this time. Why is it that the police department only has one of those signs? So they can only track one road at a time versus having maybe four signs like some of these other places go. I've go through Tuxedo the other day, Tuxedo has four different spots where they have these signs that are tracking speeding. We can't, our police department can't do it by themselves, maybe some speed bump. I know that speed bumps have, you know, said, but, and I know that they could, you know, possibly hinder some of the emergency vehicles, but I know plenty of places that have speed bumps and emergency vehicles go over them without any issues.
All right, well, let me, let me start with the first thing with the speed bumps, they can only be up seasonally, so to speak. So they would be up right now, and, and listen, I agree with you a hundred and ten percent, speeding is an issue throughout Woodbury. Uh, the speed limit on our roads is thirty miles an hour, now, I do not have the police under my purview. So it really is more, uh, it needs to be more of a police enforcement now. You give one ticket out, and I'm sure, and that ticket not only is given out, and then a judge basically issues a fine and points, and I am sure that people will get, will take notice, and then maybe you'll start seeing people slow down around the Village of Woodbury. That's not happening right now, and once again, the police are not under our purview. Now, in terms of speed bumps, like I said, I can't have them up during the winter months, and even then, they'll, and you know human nature, they'll just speed up to the next speed bump if need be. There's only so many of them I can put into the Village of Woodbury, and this is, it is a hindrance to emergency vehicles. Like I said, this is, this is more about enforcement, and like I said, the town board, I would take it to them, I have a town board member here tonight. There, the police department really needs to, and then the judges need to as well, enforce the speeding, the speed limit in Woodbury. Uh, Rob, you wanna add anything to that? Okay, Marjorie?
Mister Mayor, but what is it gonna truly take? Is it gonna truly take one of our kids getting hit, or God forbid, another person, whether the kid or adult be hit? Because this is, it's just too much to ignore, I understand that, you know, police department not under village jurisdiction, but there's gotta be something that even the village can help the town do in order to enforce these. And I really think that maybe, hey, add a couple of speed bumps, let a couple cars get ruined, and let them learn their lesson that way, because a ticket's not gonna cost as much as a car park getting replaced is gonna cost, to be honest with you. People aren't gonna care about the tickets as much as they care about their vehicles getting ruined.
Right, I can tell you that in years past, I know Mayor Egan spoke about this exactly, about the speeding throughout the village, and I agree once again, it is an issue, I live off the Smithville Road, and that is like a speedway, Ridge Road is like a speedway. It amazes me that some smaller roads throughout Woodbury are speedways. But ultimately, it has to be on the police department to enforce the speed limits. Currently, right now, I think, uh, the policy, the current policy is that they don't ticket, they'll pull you over, but they're not really writing tickets to Woodbury residents. And then when you go into the courtroom, there's no, even when they do write the ticket, there's no way, and this is coming from one of our judges, that they're going to have you pay the fine and issue points and everything else like that. It has to, it has to be that way, they are not gonna, they, people are not gonna stop speeding until they are issued a ticket and issued points on their license and then cost them on their insurance. Because it is a huge problem.
So, Mayor, so Mayor, if we, if we understand this, the issue is, is the system so broken right now that the police aren't writing the tickets because they don't want to write tickets against the, um, village, if I'm hearing this correctly? And then even if they did, the judges aren't gonna want to add points and fines onto them. So how do we fix this broken system? Because you know what, if I'm speeding, give me that ticket, give me the points, I earned those if I'm speeding.
I can give you an example of, so we had a water, we had water, uh, drought last year, right? We put in place water fines if people were using water during water restrictions. We had somebody actually fight the fine, the fine was reduced down to, by the judge, fifty dollars, okay? And then that person decided to fight the fifty-dollar fine, so at that point, is it really, is it, does it make any sense for me to have a lawyer go in there and fight for a fifty-dollar fine when I'm just gonna basically lose taxpayer money? The judges and the police are not under my purview, okay? So there's not much more I can do about it, it really should be a police mountain.
And not that I'm against speed bumps, 'cause we've put them in and in my development, in and out, but we've taken them out in the winter, we put temporary speed bumps in. I, the thing I have against speed bumps per se is it becomes a danger when you plow. And if the, if you get a big snowstorm, then for some reason that plow driver forgets that that speed bump is there, he's gonna wind up on the hood of a truck. And that's something that we gotta really be careful of, because if he hits that thing with the plow, that guy's going to get hurt. So there's things that we have to also take into consideration when you're looking at these things. And I'm not blaming, and I'm not gonna blame the police, I'm not gonna blame anybody, what I'm blaming is the people who are doing it. And then the people who are driving that way are liable to drive that way, and I understand it. I'm, again, not opposed to speed bumps, but there, there is inherent dangers with them as well. So we have to be very, very careful replacing one danger with another.
There's also specific regulations, there's state law, state law, and they call it, or they can go under state law, or anything like that would maybe happen, we may end up having a traffic. I think at this point right now, if someone, if people that are speeding, you know, enforcement by the police, that there's nothing more that is going to be.
Correct, I, I think, so just, I think Andrew can talk to Tommy and say your, brought your concerns up and see if you can step up and work together, step up, police enforcement of the speed limit. I think that's some way we can work together to do that, and it's not anybody's fault, but I don't wanna create, again, create one danger by solving another danger, so let's, we heard you, we understand you, let's see if we can somehow work together and fix this.
All right, Marjorie, thank you, Marjorie, I gotta wrap, I gotta move this so long because I have other people that wanna speak as well.
I do have a question on this from online. Uh, being asked, can speed cameras be employed? They are very effective in N Y City.
They have them, they have, they have them, mostly I'm with them. The police department is definitely selling right now, they're all over, they're all over the community right now.
Okay. All right, Marjorie, thank you, anyone else virtually who wishes to speak? Anyone else? All right, uh, here, present with us tonight, starting with row two, and the one, you guys, do you need anything to say?
Uh, I do, go ahead. Thank you, Richard, there's Highland Mills, uh, first off, happy new year to everyone, I congratulate trustee Suriello and trustee Perelli. Um, good luck in your first full term. Um, I just wanted to quickly, I just say that I'm thrilled to hear the board's priority to create some kind of junior government or youth government need. Um, over the last year, this is something that I was really vocal in promoting, whether it's on the town level, the village level, and I'm thrilled to see that some kind of board will come together, hopefully under this fourth curfew, and if there's anything that I can do to help in the creation, I would love to lend any resources that I can, so. And also, looking forward to the discussion regarding the short-term rental loan next week, that's been a major issue over the last number of months in different, in Bridge and Woodbury, so, thank you.
All right, thank you, anyone else in row two? Row three?
I just wanted to discuss Central Valley Library earlier, I just wanna bring up Highland Mills Library. Um, there was discussion at the town board about frustration that the doors were painted. Um, they were painted by a mother-daughter duo over here in town, and there was a bigger thing about, uh, we didn't get, the director didn't get approvals, the paint, doors have been painted for years, all seasons, all holidays. My staff, my mom, two of my high school students have never required approval. And just a little background, just in case, when the director was told about the ADA doors before they were ordered, she made a specific request that they be mostly glass, so we can continue painting, and that's what they are. So thank you for the beautiful painting, we didn't need the approval, we'd never asked for them.
Thank you, Gavin, anyone else in row three?
Do you wanna update on one row?
No.
I'm so tired.
No, no, no.
It hurts so much.
I've got my own comments on this side of the table. I don't need any, any other municipalities or anything.
No, no.
All right, finally, finally in back row.
My name's Tom Powell, I live on Oakwood Avenue, and basically, I was here several months ago when F the Board was here, but I raised questions about childcare springing up in private homes, and then somebody was nice enough to give me the local law that said that they need at least an acre of land, somebody's home, I'm actually two acres of land to put a daycare center in or childcare. All right, I mean, I'm only going by. All right, I mean, I'm only, uh, going by what was it explained to me? And there is still some residents in the neighborhood, my neighborhood, Common Avenue, Midland Avenue, that have daycare centers on less than half acre. I'd like to know why there was no public, um, input or discussion on it, all right? And if they are illegal, what's being done? Second part of the same, go back to the same area is, uh, a lot of houses are being bought by our neighbors. And even though they're not living in there, they are having, um, changing the housing into like boarding homes. What was one family homes are now seven, eight, nine different people. And the only way you could tell that, now I'm a retired cop, but I've been out retired over twenty years now, is the number of vehicles. When there was a private home, it went from four, but some houses are having ten cars parked on a park. Okay, and I don't think we need, as for the fire department, that these houses are being divided up into rooms, boarding rooms, or whatever you want, if you wanna call. All right, and importantly, and for the young lady that was on the TV there, you have some department in your driveway that you can slow down the people coming down your street. It's your car parking, it's in front of your house instead of in your driveway. And, but, A- Andrew, that's my concern. All right, and the big one is about the, these, the turning them into SROs, single room market.
Tom, what I want you to do is you should really reach out to our relief department.
I know, I don't see what I get today.
If you at least, uh, check with him about the, sort of the daycares being run at our homes, he can let me know whether that's, uh, if they're approved by the state or not, or they're legal. And then with multifamilies that are, or houses that are being turned into multifamilies, he's not gonna know unless somebody reports it to him.
Okay.
So he's very, he'll, he'll do the right thing, Tom.
Okay.
All right, also in the back row.
How are you?
How are you?
Brandon Kalori, Hightower Mills, Town Councilman and Village Board Liaison. So I'll be sitting here guys on the third tonight, trying to help out as much as I can with issues that might be contained to the town or anything like that. So first, congratulations, Sue, on your election, congratulations, the board board. Tonight I'm here to introduce and bring attention to the village board about the National Night Out that we're trying to bring to Woodbury. Brought this up at a previous town board meeting, and it was well received. So after talking to the people that run the National Night Out, as well as local neighboring towns that have had this, like in Windsor and Newburgh, I've created a committee. And I would really love, and I'm extending the invitation to the village board to have a representative from the village board on this particular committee. So it'll be the creators of the National Night Out that will be assisting us with any questions that we might have, location to be determined, because this is why we're creating the committee, and, uh, town board, and like to move forward with this, but I would like to have everybody on board. Um, as you know, it's a community, um, event. And, uh, it's August first, it's a Tuesday, from five to eight. Uh, it's, basically, it's a community building event between ESUs and residents. It's much, much different than the first responders day we do, uh, parks. Sorry, it's my son's bedtime, going off. Um, but yes, so I'll get it actually in four minutes. Would like to have a representative. You don't have to give me an answer tonight. Hopefully be at your next meeting, it is my wife's birthday, so, uh.
Now, you'll be, you'll be with your wife on the White's burger. You're not, you're not, I'll take the name responsibly.
You got my email, you know where to find me.
Brandon, what I'll do is I will talk to the board tonight, and we'll find a representative for there.
Anyone, anyone, that's fine.
And then I'll let you know by email on behalf of the board. I will congratulate you.
Thank you.
As the nearest town councilman. Oh, Susan volunteered, you got to volunteer. So you already got your answer tonight, you can go out to dinner what you like.
Susan's gonna do it?
Susan's gonna do it.
Okay.
There you go.
Susan, I would be impressed.
And you have her email, right, trustee, you have her email.
Yes, I'll have her. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone, Tom, you got another question?
Yes.
Go ahead, now, you gotta go back, you gotta go back. Gotta see you on camera. Oh, Jesus.
Short-term rental, is that for Airbnbs or?
Correct, that's it.
That's basically it.
Yep, that's the, the broader term for Airbnbs and verbos and all of the guests.
And that's up for public discussion on the twenty eighth?
Twenty third.
Twenty seventh.
Twenty third February.
Twenty third, right.
You got time.
All right, thank you. Robert Hunter. First of all, congratulations, and so, and best of luck to you. It's a tough job.
Good on you.
But you know what, we're gonna go with. Uh, normally, I would go to the department head with a question like this, but I think the people in the room and the general public might, might hear the answer too. And I think Rob can enlighten us. Um, the corner of Route thirty-two and one oh five, that's about six orange barrels on the guardrail. They've been there for at least three years, I've lost track. And I was curious why they're there and why this ice storm can't be taken out? That's all.
That bridge has been flagged, yellow flagged actually by the state, cuz there's under, there's being damage underneath that they have to correct.
Any idea what?
You know the state as well as I do. All right, I'm thankful to grab a deer on period two without any value of them, so, yeah. I'll, I'll try to get an answer for you, but all I, all I've been told is that bridge has been flagged cuz there's under, there's under, undermined, under.
But that's like been previewed to much?
Probably.
Thanks, Rob.
Once again, Maria Hunter. Happy New Year to everyone, thank you Sue and Vic for running. It was my pleasure helping both of you out, so you're gonna do a good job. Um, a couple things. The Highway Department, they have the best of Orange County. I wanna thank them once again. Our poll decorations are down. They do an awesome job for the Town Unification Committee, and I truly appreciate it as chairperson. And Rob, I want to send a little pyro, thank you. Next year, there's gonna be fifty-two, sorry. Um, this year, we finally got the ten electrical appliances up on the poles in Central Valley. They were done too late in the year, couldn't ask the Highway Department to do it cuz of the weather and everything. We're in the process of purchasing the ten for additional in Hightower Mills, so eventually there'll be fifty-two utility poles with holiday decorations on. And we're in the process of purchasing at least ten to twelve more new type of non-secular holiday decorations. There's a reason for that. Um, last week, two, ten days ago, everyone knows on Ridge Road, there's the water pumping station on Ridge Road, which is directly in my backyard, we share the boundaries. There was an awful loud noise. Didn't know what it was, went outside, it was coming from this facility. Diesel smell like crazy. Finally, my son went out and said he thinks he saw someone working on it. Okay, let me call the Water Department. Making no disrespect to you, I spoke with the secretary, she had no idea what I was talking about. Said there's no emergency phone number, call the police department. As a former planning board member, and I'm sure council could, can back me up on this, we made sure when that facility was built, and also on Seven Springs, the chlorination system is a placard that's supposed to be on there with the emergency contact numbers. Maybe the village board or the building inspector can go and make sure that these signs are there. I called the police department as I was directed to do. I spoke with the dispatcher. Called the Water Department. Dispatcher, I told the Water Department, they called me to call you, they don't have a number. Called the Building Department. Do you have the number? Gentleman who has the phone had no idea where Ridge Road was, nothing about a water retention system or anything. I said, if it's been approved, you should have a number in your system, can we call somebody? After twenty-five minutes, the noise stopped. They must have been doing something in there, or I should never have heard those generators running the way they did. Nor should I have heard smell the diesel fumes. Village Board, Mickey, Mike, we gotta find out what these numbers are. Someone should have been called at the village, here's YOLO, Water Department, what the heck are you guys doing? If that tank were ever to drain out, we'd be losing precious water, it'd be constantly running, no one can make in touch with anybody. That chlorination system goes up on Seven Springs Road, we're in trouble. Please, I'm asking this board, get those numbers, the placards on the fences, get them to the police, the fire department, the water department, and the building department. Please, it has to be done, because myself and my neighbor, we will be flooded out if that twenty-five foot tank ever goes. Both of them. Yeah, but what was the fact, it was the one on Ridge Road, my, my, my backyard. None of this board members, none of your board members had, were here when all this was approved years ago. So, this may be all news to you, so bear with me. Thank you to the board for approving the fire truck. It's a needed necessity in this, this village. As a former EMT and as a former firefighter for my husband, we understand what is needed to make sure everyone stays safe, so thank you very much for, for doing that. The Memorial Day Parade. I am the chairperson. Vic is on the committee, Bob Hunter's on the committee, and I have two other gentlemen who are on the committee. If you have any concerns, thoughts, or suggestions, please reach out to me, let me know. I already contacted an organization that's never been in the parade before, and they're possibly gonna help me out, and I'll be in the parade. So if anyone has any concerns, questions, please reach out to me. In regards to speeding, I'm here for what everyone's saying tonight. Thirty-two has been the worst of the speeding, and it's not our residents. It's the five different school buses that are not Monroe, Woodbury, not Cornwall, not West Point. We really need to look at those school buses. They don't even stop at the bottom of Ridge Road where the stop sign is, they just come right out. Trust me, I go through it every day with them. They fly by on thirty-two in excess of the speed limit. I will personally reach out to the Chief Watson, let him know about my concern with the speeding, and those buses are the ones that really need to be looked at, cuz they are going to kill somebody. And I truly believe in this. I've been trying to get the speed limit dropped from Ridge Road north to the trestle, can't do it cuz it's fifty-five miles an hour through here. And as you all know, all those major accidents that we've had from the trestle all the way past to, passed to the winery, we've lost lives on thirty-two. They pass with double, double, one of these people and the school buses. Thank you for listening to me.
Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, we'll go out to department comments. Uh, Mike Pinella, starting with you, building inspector.
Uh, good evening, no comments, sir, thank you very much.
Brandon Meeke Phillips.
I have nothing, thank you.
All right, Chief Burke, did you speak?
Yeah, I, yeah, I just wanna thank the board again for the consideration, trying to help with that, raising creation. I also wanna thank, not just the people here, but all the public in Woodbury for the support for the progress we've been through this throughout the year. Um, and we really do appreciate it, and thank you for that, for that event. It's impossible.
And I, and I see that you brought back up and Pat Guzzillo to the meeting to, to log in.
Yeah, pass out and wait back.
He left, yeah. Yeah, cuz what's the fire truck, it's just, it's like, do I really wanna hear to get this up? No, no.
That was his last wish.
Yeah. We can't thank you guys enough, men and women downstairs, all you do in this community. Um, we've made it a priority to try to, to increase your numbers. Uh, hopefully, in twenty twenty-three, we will all be more successful than that. So, uh, Rob White.
I don't have a team tonight, thank you.
Village Board comment?
Um, just wanna point out, in my meeting in the quarter meeting, um, about the passing of former county legislator, Rock Van Dorn. Um, if you didn't hear about it, she did pass away late December, I believe it was. I attended the funeral this past Monday. Um, she was someone who would be here championing for all the causes raised tonight. Not only that, she'd be leading the letter-writing campaign, as well as providing the local postcards and stamps to put on that letter-writing campaign. She was really the person who was here for the community, and she will always remember this.
Thank you. All right. Starting at the end, trustee Graziano.
Well, good evening, everyone, um, happy new year. Glad to be back in, live in person again, instead of, uh, on the little cube on the screen. Um, just a, as we go into this new year, and a new way of doing things, and I congratulate the Brandon, congratulations to Sue, and to Vic. We have four boards on both ends now, for the first time in a while. Um, I think this is a good time to continue to work towards some sort of decont and working together and continuing to work on that path. Um, there's been enough embarrassment in this country, especially with what's gone on in Washington over the last couple weeks, um, current partisanship and fighting among the people. It's just, it's crazy what's going on now. We, we have enough problems in the world, we have the town fighting with the village, or who's fighting with the library, who's not fighting with this, who's not fighting with that? We gotta stop, it's all gotta stop. Um, we're all one community. So, I'm hopefully, new year, and four boards, and some new people, and new attitude, and hopefully we can get there moving forward and kind of work together for the common good of everybody involved in Woodbury. That's kind of all I have to say, thank you.
Trustee Sporelli.
Hey, I wanna, first of all, wish everybody happy new year as well, and thank everybody for coming, either here or in person or online. Um, to the online people, it was great to see the questions coming in tonight. I appreciate that, you can always do that. You can also put your hand up, and we, if you haven't been here, we have a big screen TV in the back of the room that we can all see up here, so if you put your hand up, we can see it, or I can do it like you saw tonight. Uh, born and public hearing, and ask your questions, and you can get your answers. So, uh, please keep doing that, and would make things a lot easier. When you come into the waiting room, please have a first and last name. Um, not initials, not a first name only, not, you know, my iPhone, please have a first and last name.
Unless you're a soccer player.
Okay, and those are my comments, right, thank you, everyone.
Trustee Siriell.
I would just like to say happy new year, thank you to everybody for coming. And, um, to Maria, I have a suggestion for Memorial Day. Did anybody sing the National Anthem last time? You may wanna contact the Voice Ensemble at the high school. They do a lot of community events, and they were at the Veterans Day, I was there with them, and, uh, they sound beautiful, and I think they love opportunities to perform, those kids, so.
Do you know a band? Do you know a band, cuz Monroe Woodbury will be with us this year.
They're in Monroe.
They're in Monroe.
What about, no, cuz I collect every other year. What about Cornwall?
Well, can you ask? Okay, my name is on the town.
They may do it. But, uh, the Voice Ensemble would definitely, uh, want to be in there, I'm sure.
Perfect.
The high school's only one, they, the middle school doesn't have one, you're dead, right? So it's only one school. They do not, they have a drum line, high school, they don't, yeah.
Go Dragons.
What?
No.
Wow.
When you get to our age, you gotta accept.
Okay.
All right, anything else, trustee Siriell? Nope. Deputy Mayor, your.
Happy new year, thank you all for coming, it's nice to see so many people in person. I'm not getting yelled at for once, this is great. Thank you, congratulations, Sue and Vic, it's been a pleasure serving with you, and you're out on your first elected term. Um, you've done really great things so far, um, and I really love the perspective you both add to the board, and I feel like Sue and I sometimes share a brain, so thank you. I love her emails, I love, but they'll never be sitting next to me, it's great. Uh, Brandon, congratulations on your win, I know you're gonna serve the town well. Um, and I wanna thank you and Rachel for running the campaign that you both did, um, and how classy you both kept it, and really gives the rest of us hope for a better future in politics in Woodbury, so thank you. Um, and that's it. Oh, and also to our fire chiefs that are here tonight, thank you for bearing most of my questions and for what you do. Oh, really, you don't have to be here, you're a volunteer, and I really do appreciate that you're here and for everything that you're doing to explain such a large purchase to the community. Appreciate it, thank you. That's all.
Alright, it's my turn. So, uh, first of all, I wanna thank Teresa Longo, who's here tonight, I can't see her over Rachel, but... There she is!
And she has a new furby.
And she has a new one.
Furby.
You have a new furby?
Yeah, I was whispering.
I knew, it's on the floor.
Fail! Fail!
On the first door. Wow, wow. I wanna thank you for taking the time, uh, you did follow me during your shopping spree to, you know, talk to me about before doing anything. Moving forward, I, I've heard, I've watched the meetings, I've heard the comments, and by honestly moving forward, the Village of Woodbury Beautization Committee will continue to decorate the children's library. To me, I don't see how Supervisor Clemo, Supervisor Suss, Supervisor Russo, Supervisor Burke for 10 years, Supervisor Conroy, and so on and so forth decorated library, and now in 2023, or 2022, it became a problem. For me, it's the children's library, it's a building that my children enjoy. I think the rest of the board can sympathize with that and say, yes, my children were there as well. Uh, it is part of my plan moving forward with Climate Smart Task Force. We're looking to, like, do plantings there, or Arbor Day. I want to see that place decorated, for the enjoyment of the kids, for the enjoyment of the teachers and the students that go to Smithfield Elementary. So moving forward, that's what we'll do. If, uh, the town or the supervisor and the beautification committee do not see the importance of that, there's nothing that we can do about that. I have no problem picking up a gauntlet and having a great group of volunteers run with it. They did a fantastic job with those decorations, and quite honestly, uh, if, if I'm not happy with the decorations, I will have trustee York release her dolls onto Teresa Longo's lawn on a day-to-day basis. So, we have many holidays, there is many educational features. We've just appointed a, really, a rep for autism awareness, who hopefully will work with the library board. You have a long movement on there, who is, somebody who works with special beings kids. That's, it's all part of it. It's all about making Woodbury a better community moving forward. That's my plan, and that's what we shall do. Now, I, if any taxpayer has an issue with that, by all means, go on social media and say, you don't believe in decorating the children's library. Because I will stand up there and say, yes, I agree with decorating the children's library. There's no reason for it. Because for how many years that building's been in existence, it has always been decorated by the town.
Beautification Committee.
Beautification Committee, who weren't even passed that before that. So, moving forward, that's what we will do, continuing to that. So, anyway.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Of course.
So, moving forward, we're moving to the end of the meeting, which has been, yeah. So, uh, I wanna thank everyone for coming tonight. Uh, without any further business, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second, trustee Sporelli, all in favor?
Aye!